The only person joining my Zoom is Kelly.
Oh, okay.
How's Jim doing, Steve?
I talked to him this week. He sounds better. He doesn't, he doesn't say he feels better. But he doesn't have that congestion and heart.
He'll be a lion right up the last day.
I need to dabble. Welcome to today's meeting. So, a reminder, this meeting is being recorded in live streams. So if you could do roll call, Maria, please.
Sure. Sherry Boyer.
Present.
James Ellis is absent. Steven Erman.
Here.
Madeline Fleury.
Here.
Archie McKee is absent. Daniel Mills is absent. Nate Minat.
Here.
Also present Jeremy Evans, Maria Bourgeois, and Paul Ellis.
So we need a motion to accept the agenda.
You have an add-on on the agenda, right, or not, for executive session?
Oh, yes, we will be going in executive session.
So we need, do we need a motion for executive session?
You're just adding that to the agenda to accept.
Okay, I'll make a motion then to accept the agenda with the addition of executive session.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Public comment? There's no public present. Um, everyone has seen the previous meeting minutes that were mailed, I mean emailed, or no, we have them here. Everyone had a chance to look at them. And then we need a motion to accept them.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Committee reports. Does anyone have any updates at this time?
On economic development, I'd like to say that we had, as a committee, defined a strategy that would allow us to have a presence in all three major communities of Malone, South Lake, Tupper Lake. And, um, in the time since we did that, and we talked about possible locations where we could lease space in each of those communities. And, uh, in the time that, um, you know, since the committee met on that, staff has done a great job of looking into what the potential costs of that would be. And, uh, I think we're at a point now where we need to relook at that strategy. And, um, and we can get more into the specifics of that in executive session. But, uh, the costs involved really give us some pause and, uh, and the, uh, the thought is that we should figure out if we should make any changes either to the overall strategy or the, or the choice of potential locations. Okay?
Any other committee reports? Any meetings? We didn't have another meeting, so the downtown revitalization, so we're good with that. Okay. Um, treasurer's report?
Been such a long time. I think one of the things that, um, I want to mention again as part of our transition to online, we've had some challenges with the EDC getting that converted to QuickBooks Online. And reconciling, I realized that I didn't make all of the year-end entries that were provided by the auditor because I wanted to ask her some questions. I have reached out to her a number of times and they've been busy. They have a lot of tax deadlines and stuff. We do have time set up, um, planning for next week. They're away this week. And, um, some of the journal entries that we were asked to do kind of made some of the balances in the EDC account a little odd. Um, and this is part of the ongoing process of trying to reconcile some old accounts receivable items. But I also noticed that they did a journal entry that affected the principal loan balances. And I don't know if it was their intention to alter the reserve for loan losses. But I booked the entry exactly as the auditor provided because that's an easier way for them to work with us to reconcile that out.
You're talking EDC.
EDC, I'm sorry.
We're an IDA.
I'm, my apologies.
I'll put what you did say so far in the receipts.
IDA, uh, pretty much that, that's, that's been all converted. There was, you know, the journal entries on that were done a long time ago. Those balances are, are, um, very reflective.
I don't remember seeing the negative before. Maybe I just missed it, but negative net income. Two hundred and thirty-six thousand.
We generally have negative net income until we get a, even in, even in creating our budgets, we generally have a negative. This year, um, depending upon the timing of the closing for, uh, some of the, um, could be OWD, it could be another pilot project where they have, they have to pay a fee. We could be collecting that money in December or it could come shortly after that, so.
That's, that gets into what you were talking about last month a little bit, Paul, as far as we, if we, if we start looking at our budget with, with fund balance, like looking at a fund balance and then we've carried a certain amount into our budget.
Yeah, what Jeremy's referring to is a lot of municipalities, when they reconcile or balance their budget, anytime a municipality puts their budget together, there's always a deficit. Uh, and how they make that up is there's something called fund balance. Think in layman's terms, it's like a savings account. It's the accumulation of net income over time. And so a lot of times what municipalities will do is not only will they raise taxes, but they will appropriate some of that savings and apply it to, uh, the budget, have a zero-based budget. We've never done the accounting like that in the agencies, but it should be done in a manner so that way it does look like we're running a, um, a, a zero-based budget. But I want to do a little bit more research with ABO and how they look at it and interpret it before we do something like that.
So we need a motion to accept.
I'll make the motion to accept the.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. CEO report?
Okay. I've got three, three items on the agenda for my report today, and so I'll pass these, pass these down. Before I get into these handouts, just a quick update on the Bombay Garage. Last month, you guys approved our demolition contract. Since then, we've, we've been doing some clearing of brush around the fencing. That's looking good. That fence will suffice. We don't need to tear it down. We just need to add one section, so that's looking good. However, we found out that the demolition company literally can't demolish the building until we remove some bigger trees. There's a bunch of larger trees that have grown up and in a couple of cases are holding the building up because they were just growing up right against the foundation. So we can't demolish the building until those are taken down. So we, they've all been identified with the demolition company. Which ones need to go? Our engineer is going to be there today to, I mean, I've marked them all. He's going to be counting them all and then we're going to get quotes from tree, like arborists, tree companies to, to look at what it's going to take to get all those down. I'm pretty confident it's still going to be a lot cheaper to contract individually with the tree company than to have the demolition company subcontract it for a variety of reasons. But still, it's going to be, there is going to be a cost to that and it's one of these things where it, it shines a light. It's a good reminder for us on the value of preventative maintenance. Because had there been any sort of preventative landscape, like landscaping and things for the last 30 years, those trees would have never have grown up there. And we, as a group, are now stuck with that reality.
Why can't we take the building down and just whatever happens to the trees, happens to the trees?
Because they can't get the equipment in to.
Should have taken some pictures. It, it's, it's an absolute disaster.
How big are the trees?
Big. There's, there, it's a variety. There's some that are like this. There's some that are big. Yeah.
Not many.
Taking trees out is not cheap.
Like Jeremy said, if somebody 15 years ago had just went and did some prevent, snip stuff down. But they, I mean, there's even vines that are growing up the legs of the water tower. It's, it's just, it's its own little jungle.
The, the good news on that is, uh, Brian, who's been clearing the brush around the fence, has cut all of those vines. So they're, they're not, they're, they're still on the, on the tower, but he's cut them off, so now they're going to die. And we're going to build into our work with him. He, he already does things once a year at, at the warehouse in the back. We're going to have him add to his annual maintenance to-do list to keep, keep brush down around the fence, inside and out. So that's, that's going well, but it's, but now we, we do need to deal with the trees themselves, so we're working on that. I'll let you know how that goes.
Take down that garage.
Just take down the garage.
And we have to take down this garage because.
Because it gets cold, right?
It's falling down and it's an unsafe structure.
Right.
Is Brian going to take pictures today for us?
Oh, I forgot to ask him. Yeah, I'll send him a note. Yeah. We're, we're all, we'll get back out there and take a picture. So we're, we're going to get a cost for that and get that taken care of. If, if it's within, if it's within, uh, if we get good quotes and it's within my authority to prove it, we're just going to get it done. If not, we'll come back to you guys with depending on the pricing. So that's that. The, what I just handed out is our third quarter report card. And it, as you can see, we, I think we did pretty good. Paul, can you hand me? Right there. You can take a look. If you have any questions, uh, let, uh, let me know. On the back, I just wanted to point out number seven, governance and administration. And Madeline and I talked a little bit about this. We were going back and forth. We had this idea of getting everyone together to do a board retreat and doing some training together, but, Madeline felt, and I, I think I agree with her, that everyone would probably rather do training on their own time. ABO training is required for new board members and then recommend, highly strongly recommended by ABO every three years, I think. And so we did want to make sure we asked everyone, Nate, you would be the exception because you're, you just did it for the first time. Ask everyone if they would commit to doing the ABO training again. And what Maria can do is send everyone a link and then you just go and register for it. The other, the other recommendation or request we had was for, it's not required, but it's strongly recommended that board members do sexual harassment training. And there's a state, there's a video and a quiz that you can take.
You can't click through it.
This is a new one this year and it was actually not bad. It's an hour and you do the test as you're watching it.
Yep.
So all the staff are done.
Just did that work.
Yeah. Oh, absolutely, yeah. Is there something that you sent or we go out? No, I would send it to the board if that's, we were going to talk about that today.
We just wanted to bring that up and if everyone would be, be willing to do that, it would be, it's great best practice for us to be ahead of the minimum.
Sherry's been the only one that's done it for the last few years out of the entire board.
Send both of them for everybody. And you can do it on your own time. So that's, that's that. All right. Any questions about our report card for quarter four? If not, I'll pass out.
I like that you did this all.
Yeah, it's a nice update.
Quarter four is, this is. Sherry's just looking at our color coding. The way we, we try to keep this really simple. If it's done, it's green. If, if we, if it's somewhere in the middle, we, it's yellow. If it's not going to get done or didn't get done, we put red. And, you know, it's, we just try to, there's a lot of nuance in there, but we just try to keep it simple. And it doesn't matter, like, whatever, whenever the end of the quarter is, however, wherever we got to, that's it. Doesn't mean we're going to forget about the things that are either half done or not done. It's just a snapshot of September 30th, the end of the quarter. And then what I just shared is our quarter four objectives. And there's a lot there, but it's an important, it's a busy time of year, but that's just the way it goes. We've got a bunch of pilot projects that Maria will be busy with. Towards, in December, we do, we do all the invoicing for the, for the IDA projects in December. And it's a really crazy ti, it's, it's just the way it is, but it's a really crazy time because we can't send them out until the county publishes the new 2024 tax rates, which they don't do until.
The last week in December.
The end of December.
Wow.
So we can, we can get it all ready. Maria's good at getting it all ready, but we can't actually send them out until we're, we're beholden to them. And they work, they work really well, well with us. It's just, we're all constrained by the same calendar limitations. So that will be a busy December. This year has added interest to us because, um, and Maria's going to, we're going to have some sort of celebration because it'll be Maria's last time doing it.
Wow.
And she's going to, we're going to have a proverbial burning of the paperwork after the celebration. But what we're going to be doing is she's going to be bringing me and Paul along step by step for a cross-training for it. So that'll be, that'll be good. And then we've got some other things we're going to be working, that we already are working on right now.
What is the number two, Jeremy, the prepare and submit EBA planning grant?
Oh, okay, good question. So if you recall, we submitted an ESD, a state ESD grant to do an update to our comprehensive economic development strategy. That was submitted at the end of July. We'll hear back in December whether or not we get that. And our, our concept was to pair an economic development and administration grant with the state grant to pay for something like 90% of it. And so we, we need to get this submitted. And then if we get this, but we don't get the state grant, well, at least we'll get this and then we can try for the state grant again. We'll have that discussion once we know the status of the state grant.
The date of the last sets was in 2000, was it 2005?
15, 14, 15.
You were on the committee for the last one we did. I want to say 2014 because I hadn't been here very long.
Good, thanks.
Good question.
Thank you.
Okay. Just want to share all this, all this with everybody and just give you an update. So that's, that's all I've got for CEO report.
Thank you. Any old business? Any new business? All right, next. Oh, yes, we do have new business. We have a resolution. 2023-16, approve the 2024 budget. We need a motion to accept.
I'll make a motion to accept. That'll put it on table for discussion, right?
I'll second.
So the budget?
Well, we, did you, we.
Did we go over that?
We went over it last month.
We decided not to.
We didn't receive any comments from board members. We were comfortable with where it's at, so we don't have anything else to add unless you've got questions.
So then we need a motion to approve.
That's what you just did. You just did that.
So no more discussion on it? So now we need a roll call, Maria?
Yeah, we need a roll call. Okay, for 2023-16 approving the 2024 budget, Sherry Boyer.
Yes.
James Ellis is absent. Steven Erman.
Yes.
Madeline Fleury.
Yes.
Archie McKee is absent. Daniel Mills is absent. Nate Minat.
Yes.
So it's duly adopted.
And now we were going to go into executive session.
Yes, as Steve pointed out, this is related to office space and leases. So the recommendation would be executive session for, uh, the proposed acquisition, sale, or lease of real property.
Thank you.
So we need a motion in a second for that.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Favor?
Aye.
Okay, so I'm going to put, put us into a breakout room so that we're all.
So we do have a CEO seat too. Oh, that's right.
Yep.
Okay. We are back live. Um, and we have no, any public comment or no one else is in, so. So I need a motion to adjourn the IDA meeting.
A late motion. Sorry.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good. Next meeting is November eighth. We'll move right along.
Any trips?
All beer.
Sure.
We should know about.
I'll plan around it.
So we are going to move right along to the EDC meeting. Uh, no, he has.